Um. Well, it's good to see all your sunshiny faces. And I think with that, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And let's see, Lois, since you have the agenda up in front of you, do you want to start us off with the land acknowledgement?
Uh, sure. Let's see here. So the land acknowledge, we'd like to acknowledge we are on the traditional land of a rich and every group of native peoples who have called this area home for more than 10,000 years. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the descendants of these native peoples who are still here today. In doing this, we aim to illuminate a longer history of this land. We call home our relationship to this history and the heritage of those peoples whose ancestors lived here before the Euro American immigration that began in the 1800s.
Thanks a bunch. All right. Could I get a motion for the agenda this evening, please?
I move to approve the agenda for April 12th, 2022.
Second. And Melissa seconded. Okay, thanks. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, it does, in fact, look like we said it should look last when we left last. Okay, so all those in favor of the agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we have an agenda. How about Steve? It's, I think you called off approval of meeting minutes. Were you not happy with the minutes that were sent out or are they, did I misread that?
Uh, no, I was just preoccupied with whatever was next. And Nick said that that he thought you had skipped over them and and moved on to the next item on the agenda. Is that correct, Nick? Or anyway, we didn't approve them. So there, you can approve both of them this time.
Oh, for February 8?
Yeah, is that the case, Nick?
Yeah, I didn't, we didn't get a chance to approve the February minutes. So that's why we have two this time.
Oh, well, how about that? Okay, well, you know, you didn't resend those minutes. Did everybody catch that? I thought we had voted on this, but.
They're, they're both, um, they're both in the packet. So if you had had a chance to review, if you remember, I know that's, it's been a while. If you didn't have any issues with the February minutes, as you could remember it, you could just vote to approve that. And then we could get into the other ones. But if you think you had something that you wanted to bring up, then I can, we can just wait and make sure everybody can reach them through the packet like Lois did.
Okay, yeah, no, did, does everybody have them? Or do you, did you, had you prepared to vote last time and we hadn't? Thumbs up if you, if you had already read through the February minutes. Hand up if you had any feedback on those or any comments about them. None. Okay, so can we just move into a, a motion, Steve? For February 8?
Sure.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion on the February 8 minutes?
A motion to approve the minutes from February 8, 2022.
Thanks, Walter. A second.
A second.
Lois, any discussion on the minutes from February 8, 2022? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the February 8, 2022 Planning Commission meeting minutes as published or as shared, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? None. Okay, Nick, those are now approved. Gosh, Nick, and I thought I even sent the email back to you that they were ready. Okay, we've taken care of that. How about March 8? Have you all had a chance? So look at the March 8 minutes. Anybody want to bring those to the table with a motion?
I move to approve the March minutes.
Okay, the, the March 8, 2022. Okay. Any discussion? All right, I, Nick, you're, I, I think your, your summaries are fantastic. The only thing I found was just a spelling correction. If you want to make it, it was on page three, line 27. The, instead of, that it's supposed to say capping.
Two piece.
Two piece, yeah.
Thank you. I got it. Steve helps with the minutes, too.
Okay, well, you guys are doing a fantastic job. Well done. Okay, any other discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the March of approving the March, that was the 8th, sorry, now I've moved on, March 8, 2022 Planning Commission minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Excellent. Look at us. All right, um, meeting dates. Does anybody know right now if they have a conflict with May the 10? All right, great. We have important work to do then. I think we're going to start with a review of reasonable use exception permitting and enforcement. So that'll be very stimulating. Citizens comments, do we have anybody joining us this evening that would like to make a comment to the planning commission? We've so used the raise hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom window.
Go ahead, Ms. Gang.
Well, hello. Jolene Jane here and here to talk about reasonable use exception. And I'm so glad that is on the schedule. I see that as a problem where, just if everybody's not up to speed on it, where developers who have profits over property in mind and are not caring about the environment. So I wanted to, we need to definitely talk about this. And I also want to know what I can do to help you understand the problem. I did put up a website and has pictures and videos and all of that as well. And so there are two examples here. So you may know this, by Grace Cole, there is this tower-like modern building that was bought for $144,000. And the builder lived in it for two years and then sold it, I think, two weeks ago now for 1.7 million. And he was granted permission to do this, but he did not follow. He violated what the city had said. So he clear cut, he flooded the neighbors and did not follow the rules. So that is a problem where, how, how do you do reinforcement? You know, it's a limited staff. How, how can Steve and Nick and everybody do? I mean, there's a lot to do. So we need to really put the emphasis on the application process and make sure that is really top-heavy and the burden is on the applicant instead of the neighbor. And so there are many problems with that. And so that, we don't want that to happen. And so the other example in process is the house that's on the corner of 44th and 205th. So right next to me. So that is in process. And we don't know, you know, if that could be a nightmare situation as well. So I think that's really important to study these examples. And there may be more so we can resolve and take the onus also off the city staff to try and juggle. Well, you know, they, they have, they have to be able to build. So I think there are a lot of challenges with that. So I'd like to be of help with that. And the KCD, King County Conservation District, the executive directors can make a public comment because of course they, they are for the environment and want to say this is, for this property that is next to me is not a good idea. And also that the chair of the board is making a comment. And the Department of Wildlife as well, who's been out here to say this is, you know, this is a bad idea and it will bring the property to, to, you can't bring it back. Once it's filled in, you, you just can't bring it back. So anyways, there you have it. I do have the website up if you're curious to learn more about it. Thanks for your help. I'm so glad that you're talking about this in May.
Hey, thank you, Jolene Jane. Is there anybody else who would like to make comment this evening? I don't see anyone else. We'll close citizens' comments and we'll move right into a report from our city council liaison, Councilmember Bodie. The mic is yours.
Thank you very much. And I do want to start by saying thank you to the members of the planning commission because I have to say, I didn't know that the sign ordinance would be as complex and as raising so many policy and priority issues for our city. So I really appreciate your diving into it and grappling with it. And I look forward to it getting wrapped up, if not tonight, soon. So the council, of course, would welcome a presentation on what you've put together when, at the point where you've approved your recommendation. So just want to say thank you because I think none of us or maybe Steve and Kim understood the complexity of what we'd be taking up, but and what, and what you'd be making recommendations on. But I certainly didn't. And I know it will be appreciated by, by the mayor and the rest of the council as well. I don't have very much in the way of updates to report. We are getting at the meeting. I don't know whether it's the cow meeting or the council meeting, but we are getting our update on the legislative session from our lobbyists. So that might be of interest to those of you who are interested in the state land use legislation that was being considered. So I'm sure we'll get some insights in that. And then last but not least, I will be away for the next planning commission meeting, very sadly. But I believe that Councilmember Foratani will be here in my place. And I'll certainly listen to the important summary and discussion that you're going to have on May 10. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bodie. Does anybody have any questions? Of our council member? No, look at you guys want to be done early, don't you? Okay, well, old business. We'll move into the sign code. Could everybody, before we get started, just give everybody just a minute to make sure they have the, the draft sign code. And the one dated 4/12/2022 that was sent to us as well as the temporary sign proposal summary. That way we have those for reference. Okay, and then let's see, Steve, is this something, should we have Attorney Pratt just kick us off with the what she's done since we last met?
Well, let me start off with some opening remarks and then I'm going to turn it over to her to talk about the research she did and the general nature of the changes that we made to this latest draft. I just wanted to give you some context of kind of where we're coming from with this. And we're starting to feel pretty good about this draft that, that is, it's coming together. And, you know, we do have this big issue to work on tonight. How do you want to deal with the timeframe and size of, of temporary signs? But I'm hoping that as you, as we go through this and we sort of fill in some blanks, show you some changes we've, we've made that you'll think about whether you think you might, you know, if we get it, you know, the next draft back with you, back to you with plenty of time, whether you might be ready for a public hearing on this draft at your May 10 being. So you know, which, you know, we can have two things on the agenda. We could still start addressing the RUE regulations and the permitting process for those. But anyway, those, just some opening thoughts. So so I guess the next step would be, you know, since there was a lot of discussion about the timeframes that would be allowed, temporary signs would be allowed to have. Kim did some, some research on that, which I included in my email to you. And then again, in the memo that I just sent yesterday as part of the packet. So Kim, would you like to give Planning Commission a little more background on kind of where I came from?
Sure, sure. I really was looking, you know, a lot of questions and thoughts from you guys about duration. How long should these temporary signs be allowed to stay up? And so I really did look in King County to try and get an idea for what other cities were doing. And you see in Steve's memo that we're looking at from maybe 30-day duration to 120-day duration. And, and most cities are saying 30 days within a year or 60 days within a year, something like that. So that seemed to me that's a probably a good way to do it. Since we really heard you guys did want to put in some durations limits. And then the other thing is there is a case in Washington that really calls into question whether, especially for political signs, you can restrict it to anything less than 60 days. There's a case from the 90s where the Washington Supreme Court said you cannot restrict political signs to only being up for 60 days before an election. And so now that we're regulating all temporary signs the same, we're looking at giving those same free speech rights to all of these signs. So I think you're looking at definitely 30 to 60 days. I know you guys had talked about, you know, two weeks, but I don't think we would be able to pass the constitutional test if we went with something that low as two weeks for these signs. Steve had the, his chart that was in your packet. And we were hoping to kind of, we were hoping to fill in some of those blanks with you tonight. And the other thing was, we heard you and, and Steve and I found it ourselves, the temporary signs, it was confusing. It was in so many places and it was hard to know what applied to what. So we really did narrow down the temporary sign provisions in.
Page eight of 20, section four. I can share it on the screen.
Okay, that would be great. Sorry, I was trying to find it. So we tried, instead, we took out all of the sections. We put in the temporary sign section, just what would be used for temporary signs citywide. And then otherwise, each zoning district will have their own temporary sign section that says this many temporary signs and they can be up for this duration. And then also size, if you want to change size in any of the zones, we could do that, too. So we tried to kind of give you some boilerplate language for temporary signs in each zone. That seemed to maybe be easier for us all to under, understand and more easily find. We did, we did add in, I saw somebody said you can't be careful with your temporary signs so they don't run into tree roots. I thought LFP might appreciate that. So I added that in. It can't be illuminated. You guys had said that before. So we put that in. But otherwise, we were mostly taking things out of that section. We did add in where someone was pointing out that a lot of LFP streets don't have sidewalks and just shoulders. So I think we did add in.
That may be under the right of way.
Right of way signs. Yeah, there you go. So we did make some changes there to trying to accommodate what you guys pointed out as particular problems for LFP was that we've got a lot of streets without sidewalks. And so they need to be careful of just where heads and icicles, iciculus are watching and where they're walking and where they're putting those signs in the right of way.
And Kim, one other thing that we talked about today that we might want to mention now is the possibility of another provision in this temporary, this, you know, reduced temporary sign section related to, you know, if, if the sign is pertains to some event, whether it's one day or, you know, some period of time, a season that it has to be removed within, you know, so many days. We're thinking maybe seven days from the, the end of whatever that event is. So you were saying, Kim, that you thought that would pass a constitutional muster?
I did. There, there's a case, I think it was out of Washington DC where they had a 10-day, you have to pick up your signs 10 days after the event. And that was upheld out there. It's not in our jurisdiction, but I think we'd be able to follow that reasoning. There's a reason you want those signs picked up, both aesthetic and safety reasons. And so I think we could do that as long as it was a reasonable period of time, probably 24 hours wouldn't fly. But, you know, seven to 10 days, I think that could probably work. That also brought to mind the idea that was brought up about dating signs. And I wasn't finding anything that was saying, don't date signs because then you have to read them to see the date. That seemed like it would pass the constitutional test because we're only looking at the date to see when they have to be taken down. So if you wanted to put that in there, that looked like that would also be something that would we could justify and that would pass constitutional muster.
So the, most of the other changes are just sort of the, you know, the other side of these changes we've made to the temporary sign section. We've moved a provision into each one of the, the zoning district's specific sections where we would use what's in the table or whatever you decide based on a conversation, starting with what's in the table to fill in those blanks. And so I guess now I'm sure what, what's your preference? Would you like to move to the table at this point or see if there's questions about what we've been talking about so far?
Let, let's pause for questions first. Does anybody have any questions about what Attorney Pratt has gone over so far? Okay, then I think we should work on the table. That will help foster some, any additional conversation if we're working to, you know, fill things in and make decisions.
Okay, I'm going to scroll down before I share the screen, just to reduce the amount of vertigo experience. Okay, so and hopefully you've got a copy of the table in front of you, but let's see, here we go. Ready to see that?
Yeah, I think it needs to be a little bigger.
Okay, we can just move across it. So I guess just start over here on the left side with exempt signs. What we're, the proposal here is that this, you know, this three square feet per side, four feet tall is, is pretty much what I think was in the regulations. But we're starting with 120 days in any given year because of concerns that, you know, that might create kind of a administrative issue to, you know, if, you know, sort of the other end, if we're going to say two weeks, and of course, this exempt means that they're, they're of that size and they're, they're on private property. This is not in the right of way. So any thoughts about that?
We're a quiet group tonight, Walter?
Yeah, my, my only thought is if we're kind of exempting a sign from, you know, this chapter broadly, we would want to have kind of the most narrow allows where we're exempting. So I would, I would tend to think that we might want to have the shorter, any signs that are exempt would have the shortest duration allowed without a permit. Does that make sense? Like I, I could see shortening this from 120 to 60, but then maybe some of these other permitted signs extending the duration longer since they're being reviewed or permitted.
Yeah, and how does everybody feel about that? So 60 days instead of 120?
It looks like we have a thumbs up from Alyssa. How about David wants to speak? Go ahead, David.
I think my question about any kind of limits on time or any kind of time limits is what's the, what, what burden does that place on the city in terms of regulation? Because honestly, I can see areas in the city that I would see that I prefer the city be regulating or, you know, spending time in, in ensuring that regulations are followed as opposed to how much time we put into regulating signs. So I think, Mr. Bennett, if you could address like, what would be the burden if we said, you know, 60 days?
Well, because of the, you know, small size of our staff, we, we don't have a full-time and code enforcement officer. We essentially do code enforcement based on complaints. So we're not, you know, kind of cruising the town looking for violations or, so, you know, usually, usually it's just somebody's complaint that, you know, that, you know, they, and it's, it's really pretty rare that we get complaints about signs up to this point. I think everybody expects to see the political signs go up. And so usually a complaint is that somebody hasn't gotten, picked up their signs. But I don't foresee it being a big issue, you know, even if it was 60 days. Because, you know, if there, there's just usually, I mean, and, and, you know, we've got some specific size requirements. So that would trigger, you know, a pretty, you know, we would just tell somebody to just go by and pick it up if it was clearly in, in violation, we wouldn't go through the process of, you know, citing them with a notice of violation. I think we, you know, we just need to make sure that we're on firm ground and doing that. But if it was a huge sign, then we probably would have to go through the whole process if there was a complaint.
One thing I would add is we did pick this size as being exempt, the three-foot square or three foot in area. Because we thought we would collect, we would catch in there most political signs. And so that staff wouldn't have to issue permits for all of those political signs when they come around. And I guess I would encourage you to go longer than 60 days because I think we are assuming that a lot of these would be political signs.
Walter, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Oh, yeah, I was just going to, to clarify. I don't necessarily have a preference on what the time number is. It just seems to me that this would be the most restrictive number. So perhaps the other ones later on could increase in duration. I just think that if somebody's going through a permit process for, for theirs, then perhaps, or I guess in some cases they still be exempt, but those might be longer. So 120, 90. You know, it's all for discussion. I was just kind of the thought in general.
Yeah, makes sense. Thanks, Walter. Melissa?
Yeah, Kim, so what is the shortest period of time that you think would pass the?
My suggestion would be 90, but I'm being, I'm being conservative. And trying to, you know, minimize risk. And trying to, you know, minimize risk. If you felt like there was a real reason to go less than that, you know, 60 days. Then let's really explain that so we can put it in the whereas sections as to why we need this to only be. 60 days so that we could, so that, you know, we could defend any litigation. And if LFP has reasons like that, we'll put them in and we'll, you know, defend it.
I'm trying to picture 120 days of signs, temporary political signs that where it seems like a lot of clutter, just my personal opinion.
Based on the conversation so far, it sounds like 90 days is. You know, would be acceptable is that. Can we do a kind of a straw poll with a thumbs up? Would you rather see the number for exempt be 90 days instead of 120? If you do, can you just put your thumb up? It's Walter and, oh, okay, that's, oh, it's not, not Lois, all right? Okay, so I, I mean, just in terms of a majority viewpoint. If, if we could get away with 90 days, that might be. A direction we should head so we don't belabor the merits of, of shorter or longer. I do have a question though, Attorney Pratt. Do like, I, I feel like I should know this answer already, but. The security signs and things that people have in their yards are, those are considered temporary signs as well, right?
Yes.
So how are they affected by this? Like if you have a security sign that stays up year round, does that mean suddenly you can't leave it up year round? Or like, you know, I don't know, like deliveries in back or I, I'm just trying to think of the, you know, the handful of. Reasons why somebody would have a sign. I guess address signs are exempt, right? We, we've been able to name that content.
We, those are in the residential as not exempt, but as being allowed, yeah. Residential zone.
I just, I just wonder if, if, if it's not already, if we should put. Yeah, because if we are going to say 90 days, there are some signs that are typically and traditionally. Somewhat permanent, even though they're easily removable. How does everyone else feel about that? And are there other signs like that that are fairly typical that we should put in the same category as an address sign?
I'm wondering if we've dealt with the kinds of signs that people just leave up, you know, that like a. Social justice type of sign like Black Lives Matter. Do we, at this point, City Attorney Pratt, they would fall under this exempt sign timeframe, wouldn't they?
They would.
I mean, we, this whole new law really is a catch 22 to Councilmember Bodie's point, you know, we. We don't want to say, hey, you have to take down your science's real sign. But we definitely want the political signs to come down in short order, you know? So I, I was interested in this event-based piece, you know, that for temporary signs that are about events like garage sales or. Elections, although I don't think we can say that. How can we say like, because that really is content about an event?
I think if we, you know, we use words like event or program or, you know, trying to come up with words like that, that the. You know, the political signs will fall into our deadline or, you know, we'll come up with some words. That the political signs would fall into that, so they would need to take those down after the election. You know, and the, your Black Lives Matter sign wouldn't. But I think that is kind of, that, that just points out exactly the danger of we're reading the signs, you know?
Right.
But I think if we did that event thing, that might prevent some of the concerns that you guys have. Taking them down after an event.
Because otherwise we're saying if it's not an event sign and it's not a, well, we can't say a campaign sign. That, I mean, we really, in, in that event, we're kind of saying that we couldn't put 60 days as a limit or 120. But that we wouldn't be putting a limit because at what point, if we have a limit on temporary signs.
It's gonna apply as it's written right now, it's gonna find all temporary signs.
Right.
I, I will tell you, like, in, I, I've seen a case where someone had two security signs in their yard. That was too many and they had to take one down. It was just, just security signs, but it was one sign. So it happens, you know, so if we want to avoid things like that, we'll really have to figure it through.
And if we don't put a time limit on, at these small temporary signs, then legally a candidate could leave their signs up indefinitely. Or a lawn mowing service or any of these things could put signs out in the community and they would stay up, but it's technically illegal to remove their signs. And so. I, I mean, a, a council member Bodie, I would say this is probably not, you know, going to be a discussion among council, but. We may end up with a solid recommendation, but I would, by no means say this is a settled matter. It, it looks like a catch 22.
I could say feel free to, to give us more than one option if you feel like there are. Different ways that you might proceed. So I think that would, that's fine. You don't have to land on one single recommendation. You can say, you know, possibly A or B, depending on what the council thinks. So just know that you have some flexibility.
I feel like this is more of, you can do A and here are the implications, or you can do B and here are the implications.
Yeah, and when this, the very first draft that came to you didn't have any durations in it. You know, and that's probably why is it's just a sticky wicket. That versus, you know, two weeks, that might be.
Looks like Lois has her hand up and then Walter. Oh, I'm sorry, David had his hand up first. You were behind my PDF. David, then Lois, then Walter. Oh, and then Melissa, then Walter. Goodness gracious.
Well, thank you. And actually, my question was answered, so.
Okay.
You can remove that.
You just have to click the hand and lower it. Okay, and then Lois, oh, you're lowering your hand. Melissa?
I'm just wondering, is it possible to separate finals that relates with elections with other types of signs or do we have to lump it all together?
The political signs, anything that's non-commercial, we should lump together and make sure we are not regulating it based on content. So we're not reading it to say how long it can stay up. So that's the trickiest part with say political signs or the example in one of the cases was. A sign advertising a church service, you know, it wasn't commercial. And so we're really looking at free speech issues. So it's hard to, that for commercial signs. We could, they have a lower constitutional test and we could break some of those out. I saw some communities that break out real estate signs. And I think we can all think of the reasons why, but we would just need to, we could break out commercial signs much easier. And then justify why we're giving them sort of different treatment.
Walter?
Yeah, so I'm trying to think of whether there's a way that we kind of like, when Melissa was suggesting, if there's a way that we can. Differentiate those. Message or statement signs that people might want to have in their yard. Separately from what would be in the right of way, because I, I think what we're really coming back to is we don't want. You know, political signs extending that are placed into the right of way or to medians. But, you know, we're more open to what somebody wants to place in their yard as a statement. The, the tricky thing is that we all pretty much have a right of way frontage along our yard, but that right of way ends at some point. So maybe we could have some language in here that differentiates. We already talked about the right of way, so we can actually differentiate whether your sign is in your yard and then kind of open that door a little bit more.
That's interesting, Walter. I was having the same thought is that because it, would it be content oriented? Could we, could we put the limit like 90 days in a right of way? No limit if it's actually on your own property.
So we have given you, so in the residential zone, residential and multifamily, you could do that and have no duration. For temporary signs, it would be all temporary signs how we have it now. If you wanted to break some commercial signs out, you could.
But even in your own right of way, you couldn't put it there because you'd have to pull it back into your property. You couldn't put it in the, yeah, yeah. I mean, that, I think, Walter, that, that is sensible. Lois, did you want to add to that?
Actually, I wanted to go back to whether the political sides would, this is for attorney, City Attorney Pratt. Would the political signs fall into events then? Can I, can I just clarify that?
That's what we would.
Is that?
Draft for is to make sure they had a duration. I mean, we're going to have to use words different than events, but we'll, we'll come, we'll come up with something trying to make them fall within that. So they have to take them down at the end of the election.
Because it seems to me that that would solve the problem, you know, the, the conundrum of having the, you know, the, the Black Lives Matter signs versus. You know, the, the political signs, which, you know, would be, you know, I think if, if it could be considered as an event, would, would then solve that, that problem. But I, I do like the, the duration language that Steve brought up in that memorandum. I, I really like that. I think that that in the temporary sign section of the code could help kind of alleviate some of the duration issues. Just wanted to say I, I like that language that's not there right now.
Okay, good. We'll work on that for the next draft.
Anybody else?
So in, in Steve's chart or Excel sheet, it looks like residential. So you want to go there, Steve? Sounds like I kind of got an idea there.
So. So that, so there's a larger sign size there because it also includes multifamily. But you could have a special exemption for that same size that's exempt. Is that what you're thinking, City Attorney Pratt?
Well, it sounded like what I was hearing was maybe in the RM and RS zone. Maybe even not a duration if it wasn't an event or, you know, something that had a deadline, maybe no duration.
For, for, for temporary signs, all right?
Yes, right.
Yeah.
All right. So would that, would that apply to the six foot, six square feet per side or to a smaller size?
The smaller only, I think. I mean, that's my opinion. It's my strong opinion. I guess I, I would be interested in. In, in summation, are we saying that for that first column, Steve and City Attorney Pratt? That. That these smaller three square foot per side, four feet tall temporary signs can stay up indefinitely if they are on your property. But if they're in a public right of way, they have a 90 day limit. And, or any, any right of way. Or ease, or easement. Would we need to say right of way and easement or are they one in the same?
We've defined right of way, so I would go with that.
Okay.
It can be private, but it's got to fall into right of way.
And then the second piece is that you, it sounded like you might explore something about event, but I don't know if we need event if we do it this way. If we do it by zone.
That's up to you guys. I mean, if it's in a residential zone, do you still want that to have to take it down 10 days after their event? You'll have political signs, the birthday sign.
I don't know what I, I, my concern is that the, because we can't regulate content, then they also have to take down their Black Lives Matter sign.
Well, as long as it doesn't refer to a specific event, then this is kind of a, maybe a good combination. You don't have an expiration date, but it, it does pick up on those things that, you know, are outdated. So it makes kind of intuitive sense. If it had a date on it, then you need to get rid of it in seven or 10 days.
Yeah, I think that's going to be an enforcement issue personally though, because if it's just got somebody's name on it, like. I love, you know, I mean, some people wanted to keep my signs and I'm pretty sure they would have liked to have kept them in their yard year round. But in that case. Forever, but I'm just, I, I mean to say that the campaign signs aren't like go vote on this day. They're actually for a person and, and we see that, we see all sorts of at a, at a national level signs staying up. You know, I love this candidate or that candidate. And, and we don't have rules about bringing those down. So I, I just think that would be an enforcement challenge, Steve.
Yeah, I mean, it would, it would give somebody legitimate, if they wanted to complain about somebody having a sign that was up clearly for the last election, last November. Then, yeah, that would create some, I need to go out and deal with that.
I mean, I just think you're going to have trouble because that's not an event. It's, it's a candidate and somebody might say, I love that candidate and I'm going to keep them in my yard all year because I just want to show that I'm supportive of them. So I just, that's, that's all. So it's because it's not actually an event sign, I don't think having the event language helps us with that. Does anyone else want to weigh in, Lois, maybe?
Yeah, I, I, that's why, you know, I think that if, if we can tie it in with the event, I think that would solve that. But, you know, I just want to plug that, you know, when you walk through the city and look at the city, I think it's important that we. Notice all the, you know, the Black Lives Matter, the, you know, stop Asian hate. I mean, this is the city that we live in and I think it's really important that we allow the people to, allow the residents to express themselves without this. This fear of the code, you know, this fear of possibly having a neighbor call up and, and complain about it. But if it does, if, if a call does come in because there's an obnoxious sign, you know, it says your exempt signs have, you know, we haven't decided other 90 or 120 days. Within a given year period that it's allowed to come up. And then, you know, I think that, yeah, you know, that's why for that reason. If, if we can just, you know, get the political signs kind of categorized as an event, I think that that would really. Allow the city to continue, the residents to continue to express themselves. The other question I had was, so if you do have, you know, this is on an annual basis, so it means that I could put my sign down. And then if you don't like my sign, I could, I could bring it down if it's a, I love this candidate. And then next year I can pull it back up. Is, is that correct in reading it that way? If it's a, if it's a sign. In this code, it can make a.
Yes.
The following year.
That's, that's the way I saw a lot of the cities drafting it. It was, it was 30 days within 180 days or 30 days within a year, something like that.
That, that, those are the only comments that I had. Thanks.
So I think in an effort, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to try to do the same thing, I guess, that, that what I'm hearing is that if we have. You know, exempt signs in, in this category where it's actually called exempt is really everything. But, you know, to address the issue of the kind, you know, kind of statements we've been talking about that aren't related to an event. You could just have a special exemption in the RM and RS that says there's no. There's no time limit for signs of, you know, that smaller size. So, so we could draft some language like that, just, you know, see if we get that right. And, but still leave a timeframe for the exempt signs, the, the general category where it could be in any type of property.
I, I, I didn't, that wasn't clear. That was to me, I don't know.
Okay, so I'll, I'll try again. So on, what I heard was that under the RSRM, there would be a special exemption. Or that would say that signs that are three feet square or smaller do not have a, a maximum duration. So they'll just stop there. Is that, is that something that there's consensus on generally? Okay, great.
I see TJ's eyebrows going up. I would say, I, I would propose an addendum to that that says with a maximum of, and then let's choose a number of. and then let's choose a number of signs, like ten or something. If something's gonna be up year round, then you pick your top five or your top ten or whatever that is, because I do think that this content piece i- is creating a sticky wicket. What we don't want is, you know, yeah, yeah, some crazy statement, a personal statement where somebody's got twenty signs in the yard that they can leave up forever and ever.
Well, we only, we're only allowing, um, one, um, sign, uh, at this point. I mean, this proposal was just one sign.
On a purse, on a personal property?
Yeah, uh, that's what, uh, the, the chart proposes, maximum one sign.
Maximum one temporary sign, but if you have, if you do have a security sign and, and stop Asian hate, Black Lives Matter and so forth, you'd have to pick which one.
You gotta pick, right.
So, or you, or you guys raised the number.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm, I'm just trying to get us, I'm trying to move us past this first column, cause we've got some other columns to deal with. So I'm gonna just make a proposal from what I think this group might like, and you can push back and reject it if you don't like. I, I suggest that we clarify that, uh, these three foot, uh, square foot per side signs, these temporary signs, have an unlimited time that they can be in on a, uh, RM RS property. Um, but they have a ninety day limited time that they can be in a public right of way. Secondarily, that we have a maximum number of signs that can be on a residential property. And I feel like that is something in the magnitude of five or seven or like somebody can propose a number. And then it seems like it sort of addresses the entire conversation we've been having. Let's see, just quickly, uh, thumbs down if you don't like that idea. Okay, thumbs up if you like that idea. Okay, well, uh, does anybody want to discuss the idea or do we just like it and we can move on? And also, what's that number? Five signs, ten signs? TJ, you're the one that raised your eyebrows. What's the right number of signs a person should be allowed to have in their, in their yard?
I was thinking two, but I think I'm probably on the low end.
Yeah, you also don't have a yard, so I can appreciate why you wouldn't want five signs like your street. But in all fairness with, um, the different types of things that a homeowner might have.
How many do you usually see? What's a number you see in your community now?
Yeah, like on my street versus TJ's street?
Anyway.
Uh, three, four? I mean, zero for many people, but three, four.
I don't think I've ever seen more than three.
What, Melissa?
I don't think I've ever seen more than three.
Okay. Uh, David?
Uh, just for the sake of this, um, this regulation, I say, let's say number, let's say five.
Okay, well, and if you want to leave your, your birthday sign up for, you know, like whatever, you can do it. If you still have one of my signs and you want to put it back up, you can. Okay, uh, Lois, did your hand up from before or did you have something to say now? Okay, so are we agreed that, that, that we want, you can have up to five signs, uh, temporary signs of this size in your yard year round, knock yourself out. You can only have them in a public right of way for ninety days. Okay, and then the event thing, I think is probably just a lot of extra work for City Attorney Pratt, because the reality is if you have a garage sale sign that has a date, it'd work for that. But if you just said garage sale with an arrow, that doesn't work, so. I, I, I would feel comfortable with just skipping the event business. Oh, except for a garage sale sign, could, you're right, we need it because a garage sale sign could be left in the public right of way for ninety days. I just thought of the exception. Okay, can we move on from this? Is there any more to discuss or, or City Attorney Pratt, do you have? A sense?
Um, I think you made it specific that the no time duration was the three by three, three square feet signs. Um, do you want to allow the larger signs that we're showing on the chart?
No, I think we should, I'd like to treat that as a different topic. I think that has much different implications. But that's just me. I'd love to see what everyone else has to say. You're saying, do we feel the same about the second column, six foot, six square feet per side, four feet tall?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking? Okay.
And, and I, so I'm looking at these by zone and you just told me some, a bunch of stuff that we're gonna put in that RM and RS zone for you.
And I was looking at it by size of sign.
Oh, uh, but we're gonna put it in the RS and RM zone.
Oh, correct. Is that what everyone else is, is that was your understanding as well? Okay. Um, so except, how does that affect, um, like town center? So I'm looking at these other zones. With, what are the implications? It wouldn't town center be ninety days too then? Or, or is that not how that would work?
No, it's what you want to do. That's what we're asking. In the town center zone and the CC zone, how long do you think a sign should be able to stay up? How large do you think the sign should be?
And so remember, just one, one more clarification that, but these, all these signs, other than the last column right of way sign, are what you could do on private property. So I want to come back to what you're saying about, um, signs in the right of way, uh, in the residential areas. When we talk about, uh, right of way permits, because we usually treat, treat right of way the same also that the city. Hard to differentiate right away in residential zones from others.
Oh, no. Yeah, we don't treat right of way as being zoned.
I'm sorry, I see, uh, three square foot per side sign, smaller signs. And I see six square feet per side, these larger signs. And, and I, and I was only talking about the smaller signs. But you're saying, uh, I think what you're saying is that three square foot per side, if we're allowing them year round, maximum of five in the RMS RS, do we want to allow the three square foot per side signs, um, in the BN, CC, TC, S, all, all the rest of them?
Yeah, I would just go through each of those. I would say just going through each of the zones. What do you think?
Okay.
What kind of temporary signs do you think is reasonable for that zone?
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I have to apologize to all of you. I just, I was looking at it as how you laid it out with columns and, and, and anyway, I got mixed up. So do we feel the three foot per square side signs should stay up, uh, indefinitely? Or, uh, on a limited basis for permitted, uh, what's BN?
Neighborhood business.
Neighborhood business. Commissioners, temporary, small temporary signs, what's the duration on, at a temporary, or at a neighborhood business? What is it now, City Attorney Pratt?
I don't think there is one. There's just a number, you can have a certain number.
Uh, let's see, David.
Uh, so I would recommend that we stay with that, that a residential business sign would be, you know, there, there wouldn't be a limit on that.
But there would be a limit to the number, but not the time.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Is that the same for all of these zones? You'd limit the number, but not the duration. It's private property. Knock yourself out. You just have a limited number you could put up. And is it five for all of them or is it more or less depending on the zone? Does anyone want to make a recommendation? Uh, let's see, David. Oh, I got three, David, Walter and Lois.
Uh, I, I just recommend being consistent, you know, uh, uh, all across. I certainly don't like to see a whole lot of signs, but, you know, for their purposes of consistency and, and ease, that's where I would
Okay.
Just.
Okay, Walter or Lois, do you have a number, um, either across the board or per, by zone?
You know, in general, I think that the, uh, the businesses should be allowed to have more. And I think by regulating the duration, I, I like the language, uh, you know, and, and, but it just allows the businesses to have that flexibility. And, and then again, the, in terms of the, the residential, I think that the, you know, the, the spirit of, of signage in the residential zones are slightly different. And so, um, you know, I, I actually do, me personally, I do want the turn, the limitations on time, just in case. That, cause again, as Steve said, it, it's only a problem if, if somebody's calling to complain about it. But I think it, it allows the city to then regulate and have some, some semblance of regulation. So, um, again, business, I, I would love to see longer terms duration. Uh, limit numbers, six, I'm totally okay with that. Uh, residential, I would just like to pitch that perhaps a limit would be, uh, reasonable, but, um, you know, as written at a hundred and twenty days.
Okay. Thanks, Lois. Uh, Walter?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think, um, I wanted to be more, I guess, liberal with the allowances for signs in the residential areas and be more restrictive with the temporary signs in the, in the other zones, which are, which are primarily commercial. Um, most of the commercial, um, zones are going to have, be more favored on the permanent. Like they're more likely to have more permanent signs. So I think the temporary signs that they're going to be using are going to be, you know, limited to very specific instances. And I, I want to kind of, you know, really limit those.
Can I ask a question? Uh, City Attorney Pratt, to Lois's point about, uh, having a time limit on the residential zones, if, if there are, which there are today, a majority of homes that, whose signs are completely harmless. And if we had a rule in place saying that they're only allowed up for even six months out of the year, but then there was one that neighbors complained about, the city legally would be able to say, hey, you have to take that down. It's been up longer than the allotted time. Couldn't that homeowner though sue the city for not having, um, enforced the, 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 the rule evenly? And, and told every homeowner who has a Black Lives Matter sign that, you know, they've gotten to leave theirs up. They didn't get cited or fined. It just seems like we don't have legal protections unless we're enforcing it for everyone.
Right, and that comes up in code enforcement even now because we are complaint based. So, but the scenario you described would be very, very difficult. The city would probably have to really look at how it was removing these signs, probably put some more man hours on it. That would be a very difficult situation.
Okay.
And we're definitely reading signs.
Okay, what I'm hearing, and, and please disagree with me if it's true, but that for the smaller three, uh, square foot per side signs, we're saying still, I think as a majority, that we don't want to have a duration in, if it's in a residential zone. And you can have a maximum of five, but for the rest of the, uh, zones in our city, we'd like to see, um, they, they're welcome to have the unlimited timeframe that it can be up, but they're allowed one. Because they already have permanent signage on property. So at no point are they, I, I'm just picking a number so we can move the conversation along.
Can I, can I ask? So we're looking at in those commercial zones, what we put in for size is six feet per side, four feet tall. And so if you're gonna make a distinction between, well, smaller three foot square signs, you could have it this long versus the six foot can only be this long, because we're, we weren't making that distinction in the commercial zones.
I'm sorry, I thought that's what you were asking. So could the town center put up, uh, some three?
Exempt signs, it could, but I think we're, we're trying to get a, an idea for what you guys want on these bigger signs in these areas.
Okay, I apologize. I thought you were asking what we wanted to do about these signs in these other zones. The three foot.
No, the, the bigger signs.
Okay.
So we're, well, you could change the size. What we have in there now is that in the BN zone, you can have temporary signs that are six feet per side. And we're saying two signs maximum. Sixty days in any one year period.
That basically allows them to put up these sandwich board sized signs.
Okay. Uh, Lois?
Um, just, just so we're clear though, but if it's longer than they'd have to get it permitted, right? And that's, that was the whole point is, is, um,
Right.
Yeah, that's why I think that, I think it, it makes perfect, the way it's laid out, just to add the durations just makes so much sense, because it's in the temporary category. So it, it's a catchall for say COVID where, where they really needed that, uh, ability to advertise. Or if there's construction going on in the right of way, uh, they won't have to go through the permitting process, but it's flexible enough that, that businesses could promote their businesses in a short term. So I, I really like that. And again, if it's gonna be longer for more, you know, long term, just get a permit. And, and, um, yeah, it's, it, so it just, it allows, uh, the businesses the, the, the ability to do that. Uh, you know, just again, uh, you know, I think because the signage code, uh, you know, here, this is a code that encompasses both residential and business. I think that's where it kind of gets, uh, tricky, especially, you know, if you're looking at the exempt section. You know, again, I, I personally, I, I love that there's an exempt section, but I, I would, you know, I like the hundred and twenty days. And, and, um, you know, again, it hasn't generated problems for the city. It's, it's really, I think, we can come up with a ton of scenarios where what if, what if, what if, but I, um, I, you know, I just think if there is a one off, what if? I think it, it does allow the city, that's the flexibility to just, just, you know, to, to go in and, and, um, yeah, just have something. I don't know, but that's, yeah, but, and, and at the same time, allowing the residents to have their Black Lives Matter and signs. But, uh, you know, but I'm also hearing that political signs are a problem for, for a lot of us and I, you know, and I agree. Uh, but, you know, with, with, but where, which category does it fall under? It's primarily, you know, it's citywide, it's primarily right of way. But, yeah, anyways, thanks.
Lois, will you click the hand button so that we know that you're not? Um, so I, I, I feel like we're, we continue to go in circles. Does anyone else, um, have strong feelings about what we're talking about here and, um, on this front of number of signs allowed and duration?
So I guess I heard maybe the same number being allowed in all the commercial zones. Did hear that from David. Right now you've got more allowed in the town center zone. Maybe that's not needed. Are we looking at all the same for all these commercial zones?
I think town is, is town center you, unique in that it covers a lot more area and has two frontages versus most of the rest, anything else in the rest of these zones has one frontage typically?
Yeah, town center has been treated, um, you know, differently, uh, in the, they do have allowances for more uh, temporary signs in the current code. So what you see in the town center and also the SG corridor reflects basically what's in the code right now. It has, it, it refers to these signs allowed at the entrances.
And what's, what's the provision that's allowing for sandwich boards and the little, the small signs that, you know, are advertising? Like the bike shop and so forth.
Um, well, that, the, um, you know, if you, if you're thinking sandwich boards, which is this, this is designed to address, then, you know, that, uh, any business could have two signs, um, up at, um, uh, vehicular entrance, uh, at, at each vehicle entrance and one sign at every pedestrian entrance. That could be, um, you know, they could have three or they could have several, um, uh, sandwich boards. So could, you know, there's, there's like four interests, entrances or five entrances. Um, so you could end up with ten signs from one business.
Gotcha.
Is it a problem now? Do you think you have a clutter of signs at town center? Is it a problem now? Do you think you have a clutter of signs at town center?
I, I don't, uh, no, I mean, I think it's working for us. Walter and then Councilmember Bodie.
Yeah. So I was just going to elaborate on what Steve had commented on, and I picked up on it when I was reading the comments earlier is that, you know, presently you're allowed two signs per entrance. And there's actually, I went through and counted from a map and there's six entrances into the town center. So, you know, language wise, I would probably want to cap just a total number of signs. You know, whatever that number is, but it's probably not 12, per business. And I agree, I don't think it's a problem now, but I think once we put a number on something, there were kind of, once you, once you put a limit on something, people are always going to want to toe that limit. Whatever that line is. And so if we put a number on it, that's 12, we're really opening the door for, you know, some business to really like push their marketing and want to have, say, I get to have 12 signs. We're going to put them out there. So.
Yeah, I feel like from a pedestrian safety and visibility standpoint, it would be nice to actually have a, not, not base it on business, but, entrances and how many reasonably can be at an entrance. Uh, Councilmember Bodie.
Yes, thank you very much. I just wanted to say that, it is sometimes hard to follow this conversation. And so I do think the matrix that was put together by Kim and Steve, is very helpful. And part of my struggle is, where are you proposing to change what's on the existing table? And how do we, how, how do we use that format? Cause I think that would be very helpful for the council to, to update it with the changes and, additions that you want to make. And so I just wanted to mention it procedurally, as a framework that's very helpful. And I, I still am, not clear from zone to zone. I understand the proposal for the three foot by three foot temporary sign. So, I do get that, but in the other areas, I'm, I'm kind of struggling with where, where the changes would occur from what's written down now. So just as a, as an observer and someone who's going to be taking this up later, I just wanted to flag that.
Well, and, and I will apologize for my part. I, I thought for a moment that, City Attorney Pratt was asking us about the three foot square foot per side. I thought that she wanted us to apply that to each of the zones and sort of, did, were we going to have a rule about how many three square foot per side signs are allowed, in these other zones versus just responding to the matrix. But I think you're right. And given the fact that we don't have agreement, on, on some of these things, it might be good to, so that we can make progress here, if we can make recommendations on, actual changes in boxes here, because I do think this is, you know, a nice way to present this. And I think we need to make decisions on what's been presented versus kind of weaving back and forth through cells.
Well, so I could pull up the actual spreadsheet here and we can, we can amend it as we go through it. If that would be helpful.
Yeah. And, and really, I mean, for commissioners, it would be helpful if you could look at it, and, and make a recommendation on any cell that, you know, gives you heartburn or, or that you think is, is problematic. And, and I, as a, for example, I would like to see us edit the, whatever, the permitted TC, the, six, the, you know, that first box, I don't have a way to reference that top box, but, the two signs per business at vehicular entrances and one at pedestrian entrance feels like a lot. And I'd like to wind that down a little bit.
Okay, let me just pull up the, Excel spreadsheet. So we start there that the,
That's great. Yeah, I, I would like to say like a maximum of six signs per vehicular entrance, and three at a pedestrian entrance, just to, to get the conversation going. Does anybody disagree with that? Or want to agree with it? And then we move on. And once we make that box green, we're not going to come back to it. Walter?
Yeah, just to continue the conversation, I would propose with one per vehicle entrance and one per pedestrian entrance.
One side, one temporary or one six foot, square foot per side sign?
Correct.
Okay. So more conservative than my, my proposal. Let's see, David?
I think, is he saying per business? Or total?
Per business.
Yeah, not more.
Oh, I see. Oh, yes. I'm saying if you count up the number of businesses that are in the town center and then each one of them puts one sign up, at the entrance, it's a lot.
Right. And that, that was my concern.
I would almost rather code, code a marquee that the, that the property owner could put up that has a, like a, you know, a low, than constantly having a bunch of temporary signs at the vehicular entrance. Uh, but yes, so, so Walter, that was Walter's proposal. He wants to change it from two to one. And does anyone else have an opinion, about these six, these, these signs, at the entrances of town center?
David raises his hand.
It's, I don't see that. But David, did you want to say something?
Just how many are there currently at the entrance at the,
Two is per, per vehicular, vehicular entrance.
Yeah, so I'd stay with two.
But, but per business, right?
Well, it's not two for, it's currently, there aren't two per business currently, right? There's just two.
Oh, that, that's the way I would interpret it. It's two per business.
Lois?
I'm sorry.
David, I'm sorry.
No, it's good, good, Louis.
So is it two per business at each vehicular entrance? Or it two total for business? And then you can use one at each vehicular entrance?
Just to make sure.
I'm imagining every business in town center having two sandwich boards each, and finding somewhere on the property they want to put them is what's, what this says is allowed.
So they can actually get three total is, is how I.
Two, four, five. What? If I have a business, if I were the chocolate man, I read this as I'm allowed to have, two sandwich boards per vehicular entrance and one sandwich board, per pedestrian entrance, which means there's one, two, three, four vehicular entrances at a minimum, and one pedestrian entrance. So that'd be eight, I'd be able to put up nine sandwich boards per business. That's how I read that.
That's how I read it as currently written.
Yeah, okay, that's how I read it too. That's why it's actually quite a lot of signs that each business is allowed.
Right.
Okay.
Which is why I said making it like a maximum of X number of signs, at an entrance. And then it could be up to the property owner to, you know, have that as some sort of benefit or that a tenant would ask the landlord. You know, that they could have a, a turn for a spring sale or whatever the thing is they're wanting to promote for up to 60 days.
Right now it says a maximum of two are allowed at each vehicle entrance, not to exceed a total of seven.
Oh, I like that.
TJ, what, what, what do you think?
I mean, I guess, I guess I'm kind of with, I think, most of you that if I, take seven signs per business and multiply that by the number of businesses, I get scared. On the other hand, this does not seem to have been a major problem, in the past eight years that I've been here.
Lois, did you want to speak again or is your hand up from before? Okay, we kept, City Attorney Pratt, that, the thing that you were just reading from, it sounded like that, that was a constraint by entrance, not by business. Is that right? That no single entrance?
Right. So each business gets two temporary signs, but it can never exceed more than seven at a vehicle entrance. That wasn't for Peds. There is not a, total at the pedestrian entrances. It just says one temporary sign allowed at the pedestrian.
I see.
And this was, this was just related to the farmer's market though. Are you reading K? Kim? K?
Was K. Oh yeah, you're right. It was K. Sorry, that was farmer's market. Why were the temporary signs Steve not for farmer's market?
Yeah, I couldn't find it. But I think, I think part of it is we're, we're getting away from talking about reading the sign. So, we have interpreted that if we're going to have something that's, you know, more generic, we're basing it on the, that farmer's market provision.
Yeah. So we were using that for everyone.
I don't feel like we're making a lot of progress here and I'm kind of in the same spirit as TJ, which is some of these things haven't been a problem. And, it would be wonderful to update them, but it, it, at the point, at the point that I like, just how it's written in front of us right now, which is what we're supposed to be responding to, and to Councilmember Bodie's point, like that box, that text, what it says, that should be easy enough to, for all of us to say, that's way too many signs. But it sounds like there's an additional constraint in the code that actually keeps that in check. And so, you know, I feel like we're, it's, it's difficult to give feedback on that one because, you know, there is an underlying constraint that means that we don't necessarily have to mess with it.
That was for, and I'm sorry, Steve corrected me. In the existing code, those temporary sign provisions are for the farmer's market. For some reason, they were singled out, in the sign code for town center. And so they were the ones that have a limit of seven, but you could certainly put a limit, in your.
Okay. Well, then I, again, we'd go back and recommend that for that, F, you know, column F, row four, that we change that to be, the number of signs that we think is appropriate for a vehicular entrance and a pedestrian entrance. And I think I said six. So, so that it's not related to a per business, but, you know, for, for that town center zone.
If you do it that way, how do you, how do you decide which sign you're going to enforce it on? I think it's easier to tag the, you know, if a business has too many signs all total, I think that's why, they talked about the, the number per business, because if, say there's six per entrance, then, you know, you, and you only allow five, whose do you take away?
Well, again, I think it's private property and that's a, a term or condition for the property owner to manage of who is, you know, has those, privileges, those sign privileges, if you will, or if, you know, because we had, I don't know if everyone on the commission remembers, but, the mayor had signed an executive order, if you will, during COVID about allowing, these temporary signs to support the small businesses. If businesses need more visibility on the roadside, you know, I would just recommend that rather than like forever and ever have all these temporary signs, out there that we just allow a, you know, like a marquee sign that has an index, it could be low. And it could say that, but at some point, we should solve the problem. If the problem is, is there's not visibility for the names of their businesses, let's do that, but simply allowing, a whole series of signs, which most times when I drive by or, you know, at least half of them are kind of falling down or skilwonkis or, you know, really not very readable from the road anyway. So again, I, I would rein it in and put a limit by entrance, or try to solve the bigger problem and give businesses more visibility with something permanent. Lois? Lois?
Yeah, you've the, I'm a technologyer. I actually like this language and then to have the, not to, seven signs, but can we reduce it to one sign per business at vehicular entrance and one at pedestrian entrance? But not to exceed. And again, the spirit of this is just the temporary, it's temporary. I think again, if they want, more long-term marketing solution, they can apply for a permanent, but permit. So I'm totally okay to, 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 you know, accept this number, but would maybe propose reducing it to one sign per business, at the vehicular entrance. That's it. And then.
I think Walter, you were, that's what you were suggesting as well.
Yeah, I think so. And one, one reason for that is I was looking, I just pulled up the parcel map for the town center zone and there's, there's six distinct parcels in there. So while the bulk of town center is owned by one property owner, there are still five other property owners, in there. So you could end up with, you know, disagreement between Starbucks, and Arco and Merlin Geyer.
That's a good point. Okay. All right. Shall we go with that while we have agreement? One, just change it from two to one?
Hey. So stick with that and then move on to the next box?
Yes.
Any objections? Okay. So the SG SF is a lot like, the RMRS zone. So that's, that's why the same thing is proposed there. So whatever, so you could take the approach, whatever you do for the RMRS, you would apply to, that stands for Southern Gateway Single Family. But we may want to go back and revisit RMRS just to write in what you thought you agreed to.
Does anyone have strong feelings about, about these two, column H and column C? That we're allowing a six foot per side, four foot tall sign, on a permit for 30 days and, and a maximum of 30 days in any one calendar year?
And you were also going to allow the three square foot sign, up to five of them with no duration, right? And they're RMRS. So I'm going to write that in here.
But not, but I, by, that's, this is what, that's probably what I thought we were working on, but not in other zones.
Yeah, but you're creating a special exemption here.
And then did we still want to change the duration for that exempt? So column B, cell five or row five to 90 days? I think we talked about 90 days.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So in, so that begs the question, do we want the, the same thing that you've put in C4 in G4? But maybe change, change the number to maybe like two, since they have a much smaller frontage.
Yeah, that's a good point. So I'm just copying that. Yeah. So how's, what's the, what's the feeling about that? Does everybody know which area we're talking? This is the area that Jim.
I wish Jim were here. Yeah, I wish Jim were here. I mean, they do have, folks do have signs up, but I don't know. Do you have to distinguish that in the code City Attorney Pratt that, like since it's community property, you still have your own patio and like the, you know? I don't know.
So have your own limited, limited common area?
Mm-hmm.
That you would be allowed to put.
Although their HOA is probably controlled for that, right? HOAs can override the city. Is that right?
Right. Yeah, they can be more restrictive.
Okay, then I'm, how, how does everyone else feel about that in the Southern Gateway to have the same treatment as our? have the same treatment as our other residential zones, but reduce the max, the number of signs to two? Walter?
Yeah, I, I'm actually in favor of treating it the same. So leaving it as a limit of five. I, I understand that there's smaller parcels. But I feel uneasy limiting somebody that lives in a smaller lot to basically less speech than somebody that lives in a larger lot.
That's fair. And the HOA can do something different if they want, right? Great. I think that's a really good point, Walter. So everybody, does anyone feel differently than Walter and myself? Walter and me. Okay. Then do you want to put five in there, Steve?
Sure.
All right. Okay.
Another chance to look at this later. All right. So so the, the SG corridor is, as I was saying earlier, is treated very similar to the 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 town center. I think that's what, isn't there a provision in the actual code, Ken, that says that? Want to make sure, as I get confused whether it's town center or corridor commercial. I think you have to go to the SG.
They are governed by this chapter and specifically for the town center zone.
Okay. So this so based on your conversation on town center, we could start out with just making this one as well, if you want to treat them the same.
So implication here that the, the, the sign, like, is the, like the honey bear sandwich board? Does that count as this? It's a temporary sign? And it's at an entrance. Is that governed by this?
That would be governed by this under these new regulations. Right now, I think the mayor's emergency order.
Emergency order, yeah.
Cart, it's carte blanche. I mean, you can pretty much do whatever you want. I don't think there's a limit on the number of signs.
So if it became a problem, we, we would maybe be forced to say honey bear, you can only have that sandwich board out there for two months out of the 12.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear where that was happening. All right, commissioners, as you look at this chart, are there any other recommendations here that are, you know, the, this draft language that city staff has put together that you want to ask about or recommend and edit to?
Well, one thing we haven't, I think we should talk, be more deliberate about talking about is the right of way. Just make sure everybody's on the same page. This is going to apply to rights of way, which is, you know, anywhere outside of your property line. So from your utility meter, you know, to, to the street, you're going to, the, if we went with this proposal, these are going to be limitations. You're going to have a time limit on those signs. So you know, the, the, we're, we're just trying to, you know, that part of the, you know, what may feel like your lot, that's right of way. You're going to, we're going to be more restrictive on that because, you know, it, it does affect other, other constituents that if your signs are too close to the sidewalk, and that's where you have the provisions related to the not, not blocking bike and pedestrian access. Is that correct, City Attorney Pratt?
Yes. Yeah.
So.
Everyone would probably be a little surprised at how far a lot of yards go out into the right of way, but nobody's going to be surveying and marking it, but we would probably obvious.
Does this mean somebody could advertise like their roofing business in the right of way that is directly in front of my, my property on the street with a six foot, six square foot per side sign? Could they come and plop down a sign and I would have to let it stay there?
Wait, I think so.
I'm just having an example for that, so we can understand what the implications of this are.
Need to look at where you're allowed to put right away signs.
Lois, do you want to?
Just a comment. What comes to mind for this section are the real estate signs, just in the residential zone, that is. And then of course, the commercial honey bear signs in the commercial zone, but primarily in the residential, I see a lot as sandwich board signs for homes for sale. So.
So the right of way signs cannot be placed in medians, traffic islands, roundabouts or other areas within the roadway itself. So that's the restriction we have in the code right now for right of way sign and where they can go in the right of way. You could change that if you wanted. But those are probably pretty typical.
Yeah, the, the current, I mean, the, the, the draft you've got before you now says that the signs shall not be on sidewalks or obstruct pedestrian or wheelchair access to sidewalks. Entirely out of sight distance, triangle and or driveway entrance or where they have to be where no curb cut exists. Sign must be outside the roadway by at least five feet. And so it's, it's not restricting, you know, it's not restricting differently if it's in the right of way in front of a residential property versus commercial property.
Is there a standard sort of rule of thumb, like from where the street ends and the dirt begins? How, how deep the right of way goes in, in most residential, on most residential properties?
It can vary a lot.
Yeah. Generally where you see the, you, the utility poles are sighted right at the edge of the right of way. Usually if they want to, they want to avoid moving them, they can.
I see. Well, commissioners, how do you feel about this particular recommendation that without a permit, you can put a, a six square foot per side sign in a right of way for up to 30 days a year? And or, or 60 days with a permit? I'm looking for recommendations for changes to this. And if I don't hear any, I'm going to make the assumption that you're fine with it as it stands.
I guess I would prefer to limit it to smaller signs in the right of way.
So are you saying to have a six square foot per side sign in a right of way? You would only do it with a permit and not allow any unpermitted signs of that size in a right of way?
Yes.
Okay. Any other opinions? Lois, I don't know what that means, Steve, what you're writing.
No, I'm just, I'm just seeing what it looks like. I can erase it if you don't like it.
No, I just didn't know what it meant. Okay, Lois?
I, I actually don't mind, you know, because again, I, I go back to the sandwich boards that, you know, I, I guess if we take away that, then real estate signs can't go out there either and in, in the residential zone. Unless they're permitted.
But personally.
Do you have any thoughts?
Yeah. You know, my, my, my only concern is the safety for, again, and I think that was nicely addressed with the, this last update and that right of way language for bicyclists, pedestrians and that sort of thing is.
David, do you have any thoughts about this?
I'm just.
We've got a case for keeping a, a right of way without a permit and a case for taking away right away signs without a permit of this size.
I, I'm just thinking if I'm, I, I think the, the biggest problem I've ever, that I've had with prob, what's this, this kind of signage is when it's it, and Lois has just referred to this, is when it's in the way, you know, like it's when it's in the sidewalk, it's in the the right of way or in the walkway. I'm just trying to think about scenario. I, I guess I go back to your scenario. And just wonder, how would we avoid, I, I just don't see an issue with it though. You know, I don't see it showing up in the city where, where the different scenarios come up, if that makes sense.
Right. Okay. Well, we have two opposing viewpoints on column I, row five. Does anyone want to help? Tilt us one way or the other on that one?
TJ, you could just ask just, if this language reflects what you're, you want to, you were thinking TJ, you could just make a motion. See if you got a second.
Yes, it, it does reflect. So so are we doing motions on this?
I'm just, just throwing out ideas.
I, I don't feel strongly. So.
Okay.
So it looks like what you're saying, Steve, is that you can put a sign in the right of way without a permit, but it's got to be the three square feet per side.
Yeah. So, so in addition to just saying that there's a timeframe difference for with and without a permit, there's also a size difference with, you know, that a permit, which sounds like that's what TJ was thinking. That you, 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 you address both these aspects of what you're going to allow. Because, you know, six square feet is, that's a big sandwich board. And I think we put that in because we assume like real estate agents, you know, use those sometimes for their, when they have that open house and you, we know they, they value their signs, they'll pick them up, but you know, you could just a, address this. You know, in both, in both aspects, distance and size or, or timeframe and size.
Is there, I like this, I like where you're headed with this, but does it create a conflict? Because right now the column B allows you to put a three square foot per side sign in a right of way and it can stay up for 90 days. And so isn't that.
B doesn't allow you to put anything in the right of way. Right away section is the only thing that dictates that the exempt means that that's exempt on private property. And if that's not clear in the code, we should clarify that. But that's, that's what, that's my understanding. Is that correct? City Attorney Pratt?
I, well, I would say I was thinking that in the right of way, we would allow the smaller signs without a permit because we thought those were probably more of the political signs. And we didn't want you having to permit 8,000 political signs in October and November.
Okay. So, so I guess really TJ's point is covered because the, if it's, if, if it's bigger than, if it's somewhere between the three square feet and the six square feet, it's going to require a permit. But if it's below the three square feet, it's exempt. Is that, is that a better interpretation?
That's, that, yeah, that's what I had intended.
Okay. All right. So maybe that's a, a non-issue. So exempt means exempt in the right of way and exempt and on private property.
So to TJ's point, then you really could remove the allowance in column I, row five. The 30 days in any one year without a permit and just say, no, six foot, six square foot per side signs are allowed in the right of way without a permit. Only three square foot per side signs are allowed without a permit and then only for 90 days.
You mean in, in I or in, in B?
Yeah, in I, in I5. By implication, you don't. So it seems like I5 having to do with six foot per side signs that, that what TJ was recommended is that the, that size is always permitted for use in a right of way. Otherwise, the provision that allows for the Realtor signs is column B.
If there are three feet square.
I think there's a nuance with what's in row five there that you can still put out these larger signs, the ones between these two limitations without a permit. So that's just a policy question. Do you want to do that? Do you want to give people the ability to put signs in the, these larger signs in the right way for up to 30 days without a permit? Or do you always want to require them to have a permit? And, and with the permit, it could go up to 60 days. So I, I think that's, you know, that, that's a different policy question than I, I guess I've heard from what you were suggesting. Chair Larson.
Can I ask it a different way? If we're in the right of way and we have a sign that's over three feet square, so it needs a permit, how long do you want it to be up? Do you want to limit how long it's up? Have it the it's going to have to get a permit?
I'm comfortable with the 30 or 60 days. Anyone else? Lois?
Yeah, I, I'm actually just, I guess I'm more worried about real estate agents who, than if they have, because their sandwich board will require permit. And I'm sorry to take away from the question, but if, if we do permit, I'm comfortable with 30 days. But I'm uncomfortable with permitting those sandwich boards for period.
Well, they, as long as they're, they're less than 30 days in a year, they don't have to get a permit the way this, this is currently written. Right? So for 30 days in any year, you can do it without a permit. I mean, it's shorthand, but that's, that's what I meant. Or if you want to have it up for, or between 30 and 60, you would need to get a permit.
Oh, okay. Using with the row four, then it says any sign that's of that nature needs a permit.
Yeah, that's I guess that, that's the assumption that you've read the exemption section that you, you, so this, this would be more clarified that signs signs between three and six feet square. So that was just the maximum. So signs between three and six, we need a permit for more than, you know, the, you can't come, you know, the chart is limiting how complete the thought could be. So.
Perfect. No, I, I'm totally okay with that. Yeah, I'm very comfortable with that personally, but I, I just want to make sure that real estate agents could, you know, it wouldn't affect their ability to, to, to do business.
You could carve them out, that specific commercial use, if we had reasons to allow them not to get permits. I think that industry just gives us a lot of reasons, but.
No, I think clarif, Steve's clarification, that, that, that helped me. Yeah, that, that's, yeah.
So I think.
Does anybody else have?
Yeah, I touched on all of them. So I guess the question, do you want to go back to anything now? Go ahead, Adam Chair. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, I just, I was looking to see if anybody had, you know, additional, you know, comments they wanted to make or if they were satisfied with the draft that's before us. I think I wanted to also thank Lois for persisting with this. I, I see her point relative to Realtors and, and actually sandwich boards and those things are, are sort of a day use kind of thing. So I would actually be comfortable that if it's not permitted, that it, it actually have a longer duration. So that, you know, we wouldn't see the use of, say, sandwich boards in a right of way for, you know, 30 days. I, I am curious about what you've added, Steve, the six signs max at any time. Like if, if there's a particular right of way and there are already six other sandwich boards, and I'm just saying sandwich boards because that's easier to envision than a six square foot sign. What, like, if there are already six signs there, then you can't put your sign there or?
Well, I, I, I think the intention with that shorthand was to say six signs by any entity at a time. Because we can't really, you know, you can't, it's hard to draw a line where the right of, you know, what's a portion of the right of is, but you can say, look, if whatever, you know, Windermere has more than six signs up related, you know, that somebody could complain. And we'd say, yeah, we count more than six signs. You got to take some of those down.
Just citywide, you mean, not, not?
Well, I mean, there's still.
I'm just trying to understand what you mean. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I would imagine that it would be that, that it would come into play when somebody just had a slew of signs visual from one point of, of view or just like walking in your neighborhood. That's, that's, that's too many. It wouldn't be that he, it wouldn't be enforced on a citywide basis, but we could clarify it to some extent to say six ti, times six signs maximum anytime related to a particular property or sale or something. I don't know, Kim, if that's going, getting too much of the speech.
Right. Yeah, we had said there is a limit of no more than six signs for the same purpose or by the same entity at any time. And that was just, you know, signs in the right of way. So, you know, it was very broad.
Councilmember Bodhi, do you have any thoughts about this? Are there, you know, are there things that you can see are going to be a challenge with, you know, for council that we need to, to push on a little more or? Does this, is this starting to feel like something?
Remember, the council is going to start from scratch. So I think in the beginning they'll struggle in the same ways that you have to understand. And, and we'll probably have some differences of view, but I really appreciate the hard work you've done to review this and fill it in. And I know some of this is, is shorthand. But I feel like this is, is close if, if not there. So from my point of view, yes, it was very helpful and I really appreciate your going through it this way. And I think it will be very helpful for the council and obviously you have a chance to reflect on it and make some additional changes if you want, or, or to annotate it in some way. I think some of the things we've been talking about are, are explanations of what the shorthand means, you know? So so anyway, very, very helpful from my perspective. Thank you.
Thanks. I wonder if we could, you know, I'd like to know if, if Director Bennett or City Attorney Pratt, if you have other things that you are still feel like you're seeking input from us, because I think a lot of what we've discussed here could be part of a memo, you know, a cover memo with our recommendations that, you know, does unpack a couple of these that we've spent more time discussing. You know, option A, these implications, option B, those implications, so that they don't, the council doesn't have to stumble across them the way we have. It might seed their conversation anyway.
Or remember, you know, we're, we're going to use this this guidance you've given us to, to actually flesh out the the text. And so we can pick up on some of these nuances and make them clearer in the text. And then come back and, you know, refine the chart to reflect better what the text says. So, so you can sort of, you know, double check, is that, is that what we meant? And I would, the next meeting we'd go through kind of, you know, more line by line and look at what, how we've interpreted your, your guidance at this meeting.
Should, should our goal be for our next meeting to have a sort of a thumbs up, thumbs down as to whether we're ready to schedule a, a public hearing? You know, since we don't have a somewhat final draft of recommendations? Or do you feel like we have a close enough to final draft that if with a few changes, we'd be ready for a public hearing? In May?
I, I guess, um, that, that's, I wanted to get the sense from you. I want you to be thinking about whether you're comfortable with that, that, that you know, from the way you've expressed it, I, I would say that, that sounds like a very reasonable thing to suggest is like, you'd like to see it before you schedule a public hearing, make sure that you don't have, that, you know, you're comfortable with it and the comfortable with that, that, you know, essentially being, you know, you're, you're close to your recommendation. So it's, it's really up to you commissioners to give us some feedback on that.
I think I'd like to recommend if, if I can speak for, for us, that for our next meeting, it might be nice to have the, like, the marked up copy of where we're at by our May meeting and a clean copy for review. And our action at that meeting can be to decide if we are in fact are comfortable and ready to schedule the public hearing for sometime later in May or during our June meeting. That's a proposal to the group. Does that seem sensible or would somebody like to make a counter proposal? Lois is great with that. TJ Walter? David? Okay, is, does that work for city staff? Is that? I'm just trying to synthesize and get us to the next step.
Yeah, that, that works for us. I think that's, that's very reasonable.
But clean copy when we're doing? And or just never clean?
Oh, I just mean.
You never get a clean copy.
Okay, then that's fine. We'll just do the markup. I was thinking it might be easier to read because there's so many strikeouts because of the content piece. But no, that's fine. I can, I can, yeah, it's fine. I can, I can do that. That was a personal preference. I was.
For Town Center, we did that once for council. We gave him a clean copy because it was so dang hard to read. So it's not like we couldn't do that for you. You could.
Yeah. Yeah. It's not necessary. I was just thinking it might be easier for review and also easier for folks that are maybe going, you know, if, if anyone in fact is going to participate in a public hearing about signage codes, it's, it's, it's not the most compelling topic, I think, for a lot of folks, but it could make it easier for them to digest it. Okay. Is there anything else that we need to talk about regarding the sign code this evening?
I don't think so.
Forward plan?
Yeah. Yeah. We're, from staff perspective, we're, we're, this has been helpful.
Okay, great. Then in an effort to end us on time, do we have any new business? No. Okay, reports, announcements?
Um, I guess we, we do have a couple of candidates that will propose for, that mayor would like to interview for, for the, to fill the vacant position. So I'm sure we'll be in touch with you, Madam Chair, about participating in that in the near future.
Thanks a bunch. Okay, what about, do we have anybody who's listening in that would like to make comment before we wrap up our meeting? If so, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Okay, we have a Meredith Labont, but I, I probably butchered that. I won't continue.
Okay.
Meredith, would you like to comment? Oh, she. Meredith, you're on mute. I'm not sure if you're talking, but if.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, I was just, I wanted to comment and it might be a good idea to talk to some real estate agents and maybe some business owners and just kind of get their ideas to maybe preemptively address any concerns they might have. I just thought that that might be a good idea before, you know, before you bring it to a public hearing or whatnot. That's all.
Thanks, Meredith. Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment tonight? Okay, well, seeing none, the agenda for our next meeting certainly is, are we still on track to do sort of an overview of what the RUE process looks like in terms of application?
Are you, are you just looking for like, this is what the code requires right now or?
Yeah, I think I think are, I, I think one of the things that Jolene Jane has presented to us is that a lot of work has fallen on her shoulders to sort of address what was happening next door. And I think it would be useful before we start talking about the reasonable use exemption, if we understand the, the law. And then we also understand what happens right now when somebody, you know, what sort of properties that, that, you know, have critical area, properties with critical areas have to use this mechanism for building and here's what that looks like. Here's the process, the public notice, the hearing examiner, just so that we're all operating on the same body of knowledge before we look more closely at what's happening with RUEs in our community. And if there's any way that we can improve either the application permitting process and or enforcement. So really just trying to get a, a solid foundation of understanding for all of us from the law to the processes that we use.
When you say the law, are you asking for more than just what the code requires or, or maybe why we have RUEs even at all?
Yeah. Yeah, I think the statement, I think the statement, I have had neighbors who say, why does the city allow people to build on that property? Because there's a state law that says they have to.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so like, what does the Growth Management Act say about this? And, you know, what is sort of the, the basics as far as you know, property takings, you know, because so, so I, I think that those are some areas that City Attorney Pratt could give you some kind of, you know, good, good bumpers on. So.
And I don't think we have to get into that. I'm sorry, go ahead. I was just going to say, I don't think we need to get in the weeds with it. I think it's just understanding why these environmentally sensitive areas are allowed to be built on. And I think that's something that we need to understand. Okay.
I, I was just going to suggest how much building do you have to have for a reasonable use exemption? In other words, what are the sideboards? How, how, how far or how small can we go? And then second, what about mitigation? I'm, I don't know much about this, but I'm interested in those two aspects as well. And then Steve, you might have some case studies. I think the, the generalities are always better if, if you have some examples. And I know we, I think you said we have a couple every year usually, so.
Yeah, we could, we could pull up some site plans and kind of look at, I think, I think that's, that is an area where, you know, I think if we, we were allowed to do it, it'd be really good to, to lay down kind of what's, what's a, a typical footprint and codify that. I don't, I don't know if we can do that or not, but, but it has been very consistent, somewhere between 1,000 and 1,200 feet is what the hearing examiners approved.
Thank you. Just a few thoughts for me.
Anybody else have thoughts about our next agenda and what we'll focus on? Okay. I would love to take a motion to adjourn if nobody has anything else.
I move to adjourn tonight's planning commission meeting.
Second.
Second? Okay, great. Any discussion? All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned. Everybody, thank you for your time and City Attorney Pratt and Director Bennett, thank you so much for the work that you've put into this, maybe not super exciting signage code work, but it is important and I, I see that we have so many changes to make to be compliant. And anyway, I appreciate the time you guys have put into this.
Thanks to you and Councilmember Bodhi for helping us figure out a way to get through this.
Thanks for the hard work. It is very difficult. I know. So thank you.
Tedious. I think tedious, tedious is the word you're looking for. Okay, bye, bye. I'll be in touch, Steve. Okay.
Okay, sounds good. Bye bye.